If you call the meeting order, I would like to announce that we had a 6:30 exacting discussion to discuss personnel and legal issues. We're going to start with lights lit.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call this... Mrs. Elder? Mr. Hauser?
Here.
Mr. Laser?
Here.
Mrs. Mays?
Here.
Mr. Muller? Mr. Music?
Here.
Mr. Palmer?
Here.
Dr. Zorch?
Here.
Dr. Buckland? Here. We'll start with hearing of visitors, part one. That's where anybody can come to the podium, state their name and address if they have any questions or concerns with anything on tonight's agenda. At the end of the meeting, there is also a time for those to speak or have any questions or concerns with things that are not on the agenda. When you do speak, you have to have a five-minute time limit. Okay, we'll start with the approval of minutes. We'll look for the adoption of Resolution 181. Second. We move in second. Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. opposed? And that passes unanimously. I'd like to move for the adoption of Resolution 182, which is to accept the resignation of school board member William Muller.
Sir.
To move in second then. Any comments?
Yes. Before we approve the motion, I'd like to say on behalf of the Finance Committee that Mr. Muller was really the impetus for putting in place the Book Act, the Assessment Values for Business, and as such was able to garner more tax money for the school district, and I'd love to see that he is commended for that.
Thank you, Mrs. Elder. And on behalf of the rest of the school board, we do appreciate and recognize that it is a lot of time and service for any school board members, so I would like to recognize his time and dedication. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that passes unanimously. I'm going to move for the adoption of Resolution Number 183, appointing school board representative replacement. We would like to appoint Heidi Kozar to fill the unexpired term of William Muller for the remainder of 2017, so that will go until December. We'll have a roll call vote for that.
Sir.
To move in second then. Any comments or questions? All those in favor, roll call around. Mrs. Elder?
Yes.
Mr. Hauser?
Yes.
Mrs. Mays?
Yes.
Mr. Laser?
Yes.
Mr. Music?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Dr. Zorch?
Yes.
Dr. Buckland?
Yes.
And that passes unanimously.
Would you join me over here, Mr. Hauser? Under the public school code, when there is a resignation, the board has 30 days to fill the resignation. You need a majority vote of the remaining members. Having heard eight of the remaining members give an affirmative vote, there is certainly a majority, and it's my pleasure to do this again. Would you raise your right hand, please, and repeat after me? I solemnly swear...
I solemnly swear.
...that I will support, obey, and defend...
I will support, obey, and defend...
...the Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States.
...and the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
The Constitution of this Commonwealth.
...and that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
Congratulations.
Thanks. For the legislative report, I would just like to point out that there was a extra percentage increase every year of Peasers goes up, which is the Pennsylvania School Employee Retirement System, which is not just school employees, does encompass more than that. But originally, it was to be set at 30.62 percent, and in January, they decided to jack it up further to 32.57 percent. Reminding everyone, the rate in 2011 was 8.6 percent. So we've gone from 8.6 percent up to 32 percent. If you think of your own incomes or expenses, that's just crazy, that amount. So that means the net increase to our budget this year is $410,000, which is the equivalent of 1.2 mils. Our employer liability is $3,882,000 and change. So it is, I encourage you to discuss with your lawmakers to address Peasers. The budget talks are beginning again. This Peasers funding affects all 500 school districts. It is not just a Latrobe thing. This is every school district being affected by these huge increased percents that we can do nothing about. And our legislative, our people who are legislative, Senator Kim Ward, and we have representatives Reese, Petraka, and Nelson. So find out who your lawmakers are and make sure you encourage them to, every year they discuss it, and every year they don't change anything. So it's going to be very detrimental to a lot of school districts, I would include it. Okay, facilities operations and planning, Mr. Hauser.
Thank you, Dr. Muller. I had the distinct pleasure, our last facilities operation meeting, to listen to a presentation from our Capstone students. And Mrs. Logan is here with her students today to present that presentation to you guys here today.
Hello, allowing me to introduce myself and both. My name is Rebecca Dell. I am a senior. And my plans for next year involve going to Penn State's Fayette campus to study forest ecosystem management.
Hi, my name is Mary Person. I'm a senior also. I'm going to St. Vincent next year to get my bachelor's in biology and then hopefully move on to basketball.
Hi, my name is Cassie Sullivan. I'm also a senior, and I'm also attending Penn State University Park for our education.
So we have an initiative to bring single-stream recycling to the school district. And our mission statement is that we aim to implement single-stream recycling at greater Latrobe school districts in order to better the school environment by keeping plastic bottles and other recyclables out of landfills.
A little bit about single-stream recycling. It's a system in which multiple recyclables are placed into a single bin for recycling. This includes paper, plastic, metal, cardboard, and glass, and it's a lot more convenient than other recycling because our school district does not have to separate the items that we're recycling. It's all just put into one bin together and shipped off. This has many environmental and educational benefits. The obvious environmental benefit is that our school district will have less waste to go into landfills and it will better our community. There's also many educational benefits because not many schools that are, not many students at our district are aware of what can and can't be recycled. So if we implement this, we can educate them on everything that can be recycled. Our school district currently only recycles paper materials. We used to have single-stream recycling, but in 2008, it was cut due to budget cuts during the recession. So since then, we have only been recycling paper bottles.
What's going on?
So we will be doing this single-stream recycling through public services. For the high school, we would have an eight-yard all-in-one bin, and for the junior high, Bagley and Mountain View, we would have a six-yard all-in-one bin. Now, LES plans on joining in, but they have a new school to build, so they're not joining in quite yet. It would be picked up every year, every week, sorry. It would be a three-year contract. The cost would be a one-time fee for each school of $70.21, which is just the delivery charge. And then the nine-month total for the high school would be $495. We chose nine months just because we have three months of summer, and there's not really enough to be recycled during those months, so we didn't see a reason to have to pay for it. And then the nine-month total of all the schools, oh, no, never mind, just Mountain View, Bagley, and Junior High is $450. On this list is other schools that are using public services. As you can see, there are many local schools that are using it, and we have like the bin sizes they use and the frequency that they get it picked up. And this is generally what we base our bin size and pickup frequency off of, and we looked at schools with similar sizes to know how much we need for that. Our initiatives, we have already confirmed, we already have confirmed commitment by those like eighteen to collect in classrooms. They already, after school, pick up the paper bins, but then they would just be picking up the all-in-one bins. We did a petition, and we have 577 signatures from students and teachers, and they basically promised that they would help us implement single-stream recycling and would be like all for it and would help to like teach it to the rest of their students and their friends and make sure that everybody's doing it. After implementing, we have promotion projects such as teacher education. We would make sure that all the teachers like know what single-stream recycling is so they can tell their students what can and cannot be recycled. We would obviously have announcements to make sure that people are aware of this, and we would have signs around the school to make sure that people are recycling the items that need to be recycled.
Potentially also signs next to the garbage and recycling bins as just a friendly reminder.
Several weeks ago, we had a meeting with the Parks and Grounds Committee, and since then, we initially only had the high school at the time and possibly Mountain View for single-stream recycling, and they suggested that we have the whole school district while we're doing it. So since then, we have gotten permission from all the school districts, I mean, Bagley, Junior High, and Bagley, that they would love to also join on the single-stream recycling. And again, LES is being postponed. So all in all, what we're asking for...
Those will be old numbers.
Yes, they are. Sorry, this was a Google presentation. We thought these would be updated. So can I...
Okay, I know what the number is.
Mary got them memorized.
Okay, so those numbers are correct. I can't tell you the exact like month numbers and everything, so I apologize, but the total... Oh, do you guys...
No.
Okay, never mind, I'm sorry.
Yeah, could that be refreshed, Ms. Golden?
Yeah. Like there's like, there's like a dollar sign with nothing next to it, so it's definitely not. That means those numbers that I said earlier, we probably lost them too. Do you want me to repeat those?
Well, they're included in that.
I know. Yeah, we just updated these numbers a couple hours ago.
How about that?
Okay.
That's more like it. Thank you, Ms. Golden.
Thank you. Okay, so you can like read the entire chart itself, like explaining everything, but our grand total would be around $9,800, but that's for all three years, for all the schools except for LES. The only thing that does not include is a one-time delivery fee of around $280 for the bin delivery and the extra cost of garbage bags.
That $280, so that's for all of the schools combined.
Yeah, that's for all the schools combined, sorry. Clarify that. Questions?
What goes in the, does it go in the classroom, in the halls? What gets emptied into this big bin?
We were planning on doing recycling bins in all the classrooms, and so students could put all their paper, all their plastic, metal, plastic, put in there. We'll probably also have some in the hallways and the cafeteria so that their lunch foods and stuff, their plastics can go in as well. So it'd be kind of like how we have recycling now, like every classroom would have, like right now, we have the blue paper recycling bin in every classroom. We would just replace that with our all-in-one bin, and then the cafeteria would have a lot of recycling bins. So it'd basically be the same, almost the same thing, it would just be different types of bins.
And how do the little ones get emptied into the big ones?
The recycling team. Yeah, that's like how we collect, yeah. They already collect the paper recycling in a similar way. So they'd be able to help us with that.
Who provides the bins?
Our Capstone class has a funding that we plan on buying the bins.
And who oversees the bins again? I didn't quite understand.
Our school district, we have a recycling team. It's like a bunch of chemistry students and stuff, and a lot of people do it because you get bonus, bonus for chemistry. So they will have motivation to do it, and they come every week and they just go classroom to classroom and do the bins, and that gets taken to the big bin outside. Obviously, since like the cafeteria, like that's the janitors, the recycling would be like, obviously, like students that are here or future Capstone classes would be able to help with emptying, and would it just be the recycling team alone?
What about elementary schools where they don't have a recycling team?
Do you mind if I join?
Ms. Chola has this.
Yes. So there are a number of teacher representatives who are advocates for this initiative in the individual buildings, and so they have coordinated separate programs per their building. For example, in the junior high, they have a buddy system where the learning support students are matched with another student, and they manage their collection. The elementary school has a similar system where they have either a green team or some kind of eco club that manages the classroom-to-classroom pickup. But again, that's unique to building by building, and we've been working with individual teachers who help run those individual programs.
Any other questions?
I just have a quick question about volume. Will there be more volume now, since you're putting more in the bin than just paper every day? I'm worried that the bins are going to fill up faster than the team can get there.
Well, we are for the classrooms getting, the bins we're getting, I'm pretty sure. There are larger bins than the small paper bins, so they'll probably be like decently high. Like the bigger green ones, I'm not sure if we can spot them.
Yep. Okay.
And I'm sure the ones in the cafeteria will be... Yeah, they won't be like the teeny, tiny ones.
Yeah.
Yeah. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Golden, could you work your same magic on this presentation?
Sure.
Hi, I'm Darvin Philatta. I'm a senior, and next year, I plan on applying to Penn State University for sports management.
And actually, we are, I'm a senior also, and I plan to go to St. Vincent for environmental science.
For our project, we want to build a butterfly garden. Here's an overview of what we're going to be talking about through our presentation, and also we have that listed on here, papers that we've printed out. What is a butterfly garden? It's a garden that we, we'll plant different flowers that will attract butterflies, and it can help them, help support them through all the stages of their life cycle.
This is the project process. We've already done the research and planning. We spent lots and lots of time doing that, researching different plants and locations and places like that. Now we just need to install it.
Where do we want to place the garden? We want to place it between like the school and rocky field. There's the playground right there, and we want to build it right next to the playground. There is a water source right nearby for, it's so easy access to water to be watered, and it's a nine-by-nine feet square garden.
Okay, why do we pick this spot? It's good for education, like Mrs. Logan's environmental class and life science classes. It would be cool to go outside and actually see what they're learning. And we just built, for student public use, we just built that huge complex back there, and it would be nice for the public to go back there and see it. There's also a little bench back there for people to sit. It just looks pretty and enhances the appearance of our school. And for graduation, I think it's cool for, like graduations to help out there, so people to take pictures. It'd be a pretty background. And we plan to dedicate this to Wildcat Angels, the people that have passed throughout the school. We don't plan to put any names on it, but there'll be a little plaque, and there's, there's this little quote that we all supposed to write.
What do we plant in it? We choose to use plants native to PA and ones that will attract butterflies and help them through all stages of their life cycle. A couple are host, cone flower, sun drops, milkweed.
It'll be needed, it'll be weeded two or three times a year. Capstone will take care of that, and any organization that needs volunteer hours, like NHS and stuff like that, they can get their volunteer hours in. And we're going to use perennials, so they come back every year, so we won't have to bother with planting animals.
Also, out front of the school, we have that wildcat that our club just made. We're going to be planting flowers up there to beautify the front of the school. Yeah, and then Capstone can help weed those for years after and take care of it. Any questions? Yes.
Did you research how many of the plant, the type of flowers that you'll be planting are also favorites of these?
No, we did not, but that's something to look into. But, but yeah. That'd be something to look into.
You're concerned being allergies, I'm guessing?
And right next to the playground?
Sure. Yeah, let's go find them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to thank all the students for presenting. I know it's always very enjoyable to hear what you guys are doing. It's always impressive hearing you speak on.
And as Mr. Frederick refers, it's the women of science. Our next facilities operation meeting is Thursday, April 6, 3:30 PM, as we have been as are minutes from our previous meetings.
Thank you, Mr. Hauser. Education and planning, Mrs. Mays?
Thank you. We'll begin the semester report from Natalie, who may have a bit of interest in the role.
Hello, I hope everyone's doing well this evening. I'll be starting with the elementary school report. For Mountain View, they're having a third-grade recorder parent program that'll be on March 29th, and then they're having the Spring Flank on March 31st, which is a book fair, and there'll be Dr. Seuss Bake Off. And then there are no individual events for Bagley and LES this month, but at all three elementary schools, there was a Ballet Folk Lo Rico, which is a cultural assembly, and it was held March 8th, 9th, and 10th. And then there was a kindergarten transition event with both the parents and their kids, and that was held on March 16th. And then there's also kindergarten screening. Thank you.
Okay, and for the junior and senior high schools, starting with the junior high, they have a dogfight tournament, and the junior high student council held this to raise money for things that they want to do. This was on Friday, March 10th, from 5:00 to 8:00 PM. And the junior high will also be holding their musical, which is Peter Pan this year. That will run from March 31st to April 2nd. March 31st and April 1st, it'll be at 7:00 PM at LES, and on April 2nd, it will be held at 2:00 at LES. For the senior high, we had Pulling Palooza on Friday, March 3rd. This is where, we have this annually. It's held by the senior high student council, and basically, we have teams compete in different games and activities to win prizes and things like that, and it raises money for the student council. We also had the prom fashion show. This was held by the class officers. Basically, what, what happened was different vendors and businesses, local businesses came. They provided dresses and tuxedos for students, and they also provided things like tarahalaf for the people that came to watch, and there was a fashion show. Scheduling has started for grades nine through 11 for the upcoming school year. In fifth ed classes, there was an army obstacle course where like students could go through and wear costumes and things like that. It was pretty cool. And the senior high musical was held on March 17th through the 19th. It was Titanic in senior high auditorium. I went and saw it and thought it was wonderful. I hope that everyone got a chance to go see it. And on Friday, March 31st, this senior high is going to hold their annual blood drive. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hauser. Thank you very much. Moment report, anything to report tonight? Mr. Franch, the House of kindergarten registration.
Good, we're at 206 students in this. As Natalie had said, the kindergarten screening's going on. That starts this week. There have been some transition events, but there is still time to register for kindergarten. We would like to have more than 206. So 724-539-4293 is your number to call for kindergarten registration. It just takes a little bit of time and no cost.
Thank you, Mr. Franch.
You bet.
I'm glad you said kindergarten screening. I thought you said kindergarten screaming.
That comes natural. Educational programs, Dr. Tepper.
Yes, I would like to introduce Mrs. Cindy Pompeolia, who will introduce two groups of students who will talk about various challenges and competitions in which they have been involved.
Good evening. I'm here on behalf of the math and science departments to introduce two different teams of students that recently competed in two different STEM competitions. They're going to tell the bulk of, they give you the bulk of the information about the competition, but they said they were too shy to talk about their results, the first group did, so I'm going to do that for them. The first group, it was a student, a group of five students. We have JD Hackner and who, Mason Petrowski, Justin Pierce, and Joey Schrum, who worked together on what is called the Moody's Mega Math or M3 Challenge. And this is a nationwide competition that there were approximately 1,200 entries, and we just found out today that we finished, we were hoping to be a finalist. That was our wildest dream, but we're really excited and I'm really proud to tell you that we finished as, with honorable mention, which places in the top 8 percent of all of the teams in the country, and the students received a $1,000 scholarship for their work. And they already calculated that that works out to $14.28. Because the way it was asked, two, the students could not make it, but I have JD, Justin, and Anna to tell you about the competition.
Okay, so to start, the Moody's Math Challenge is basically a math modeling challenge, so kind of like, like more advanced graphing, but just that realm of things. And it's run by the Moody's Corporation. For those who don't know, they're, they do like financial work, like investment banking, stuff like that, risk management. They kind of run it every year. I think they do it to interest people in going into their line of work, obviously, to get employees, but I think they also do it, because they offer internships and stuff based off this, so they kind of do it to cherry pick interns and employees and stuff. Every year, the problem's different, and the problems are really complex, and a lot of them, you have no idea where to start. But this year, the problem had to do... But this year, the problem had to do with climate change. And the first part of the problem, we were given five national parks and we had to assign a risk rating of high, medium, or low to each park for how rising sea levels could affect them in the next 10, 20, 50 years. The next part of the problem was to account for all the severe climate-related events like hurricanes, like wildfires. And we had to compile those and create a score for each park in order to basically say if they would be affected by severe weather-related catastrophe in the next 50 years. And then the last part of the problem was to look at the five parks again, look at the visitor, look at the visitor numbers given by the National Park Service and decide where the park service should invest their money in order to please everyone and to prioritize the parks that are either going to have natural disasters or not.
My name's Justin Pierce. I'm a senior at the high school. Well, this was a 14-hour math challenge and as you can imagine, it had many difficulties and multiple that. So we gave ourselves about four hours. There were three problems, so that's 12 hours. And then the last two hours were just writing a paper, which ended up being, I believe, 20 pages long. And the maximum was 20 pages, so we really squeezed it in. So the first problem, we had to look at 20 years of sea level data for the five national parks. And we had to pretty much model that for 50 years. And modeling data from 20 years to 50 years is not very accurate, so we really didn't know what numbers we were going to look for. So we're really glad that we were honorable mention, so it means our numbers made sense. So the data they gave us to model was not very good. It was missing years of data. It was oscillating. So we kind of had to use some mathematical magic to kind of make it more normal and predict for the future. This was one of, this is really how I feel to the saying, the more you know, the less you know. Because when we got to the second problem, we just spent four hours modeling sea level at five locations. And then they asked us to model five more things for each location, which is a total of 25 things to model. We didn't think we were going to do that within four hours. Fortunately, we already learned the whole process within the first four hours and were able to finish within a given time. So the final problem was to look at the visitors of each park. And this was pretty much, they brought everything together because we knew that some parks were going to be underwater within 50 years, so we didn't want their visitors to be in the millions, that wouldn't make sense. So we developed a model which used all the data from the past two problems, from number one to two. And fortunately, the parks we expected to be underwater did end up with zero visitors. And the parks that were expected to be least affected by climate change did have an increase in visitors. So a model, it turns out, it worked pretty well. That's pretty much, those are the basis of difficulties. Can you imagine 14 hours? We had a lot of mental difficulties.
Like Justin just stated, 14 hours is very long for all of us. I think you can all say that hour one was pushed with all of our, with much adrenaline. We were really going at it, but by the time it was nearing the end of the night, we were really getting tired. From this experience, I think I can say for all of us, it was our first time to have the opportunity to participate in something of this national scale. I think we would never, previously, we never would have imagined that we were able to compete against students of such high caliber. And with our results, I think we're very pleased. And we are really fortunate to have our teachers, and I think their hard work has paid off. And we, I think, I think we reached the level that we should have, and we have actually, I think, exceeded our expectations. Moving forward, I think this has opened our eyes into what more we can do with what we have learned. Math and mechanical modeling isn't something that's strictly taught in classes, rather it's something that's a culmination of different aspects, such as like computer science, statistics, just like basic math and algebra or calculus. And if you look through, especially for problem two, we had some crazy intervals going in, so that was, it was quite a headache. But moving forward, we are all looking into STEM fields, so this is definitely our first step into the direction that we want to move into. Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you guys for letting us talk.
Before I introduce the second group, I want to add a couple comments to what they told you already. They told you they were together for 14 hours, but they didn't tell you that it was on Saturday and that they got up and got themselves together. They had their choice of time, anywhere from 7:00 AM to any time after 7:00 AM they could start. And they started mid-morning. And I was not allowed to be there or have any contact with them. I could send them text messages of encouragement and I sent some food to them. And then I started getting text messages back. I was a little, they were kind of ho at first, as Anna said, but then I got a picture of JD wearing a chair on his head. I was a little nervous. But I knew they would pull through. About midnight, I got their last text message and said that they were about ready to push it in. So I was really thrilled. And when I saw the product and read what they did, I just can't begin to tell you how impressed I was with the quality of their work. So thank you, guys.
Before you move to the next group, can we hear what they're doing next year? The other students, I know I said that, Miss.
Well, I currently don't have any plans. I mean, I have plans of going to college, but I have no idea where I'm going yet. But looking to the future, I want to go to something that I'm willing to do.
Yeah, I'm waiting until the end of March to hear anything.
Well, I want to study aerospace engineering and I'm still looking at what school I'm going to go to.
Thank you.
Okay, for our second group of students, if you, guys can come on up here, please. And again, I'll give an quick overview before they give you the more details, just to introduce them and tell you a little bit about the results. We had Ishelou, Brandon Mcgannon, Chris Potter, and Tyler Zellers, who participated in, it was not a national competition, but it felt like it. It was Westmoreland County Pasta Bridge Competition, sponsored by Carbones and held at St. Vincent College. And the results, again, we were hoping that we would win the competition with their bridge supporting the most weight. I think just to one lousy joint in the middle of the deck, we didn't quite hit what we were hoping for. But it was an incredible learning process for the students. And I'm really anxious, especially because we had two juniors on the team, that they will be willing to go back next year after we observe what all the other teams came up with and to knock them dead next year. So they're going to explain a little bit more of the competition to you.
Thank you, Mrs. Pompeia. Really quickly to get the introductions out of the way. My name is Brandon Mcgannon. I'm a senior here. And next year, I plan to, at the moment, attend Embry-Riddle Air Department University, majoring in mechanical engineering with a track in unmanned systems and robotics. And currently awaiting two decisions at other colleges, so that's planned at the moment, but we'll see what happens.
I'm Tyler Zellers. I am currently a junior at Embry-Riddle. And I plan on going to college to be majoring in computer engineering.
I'm Christopher Potter, and I'm a junior also. And I don't know what I want to be yet, but either go to Notre Dame or West Virginia.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ishelou, and I'm finally going to CMU next year for computer science. I was accepted for early decision, and so I had fairly stress-free last few months.
We are beautiful.
So before we begin, Brendan's going to pass around a scale model that we made. That was 3D printed, actually, using Mr. Glenn's 3D printer that we have in the school. And so I thought it was a pretty cool visualization of what we're trying to do.
Yeah, so before I get to that, I'd like to congratulate everyone else on what they presented tonight. This senior class and the juniors we have here with us, too, is incredible. Very literally, it's one of the best schools around here. I can't say I'm more proud to be a Wildcat, so great job, everybody. Unfortunately, we don't have the actual bridge to present to you. It's in shambles. The only remaining piece is a wood block with a metal eye hook in it that was supporting the weight. But we did use the 3D printer to print approximately 10% scale model. And unfortunately, the only part that isn't the 3D printed PLA plastic is the, these trusses running around the top. That's balsa wood painted red. The 3D printer would have had to print a lot of supports and wouldn't have been able to do that accurately in time for the meeting site. But we'd like to pass this around and give it to you all and allow you to see a little bit of what the design aspect was.
The materials we were given to construct the bridge consisted of one pound of spaghetti, one pound of lasagna, and like a handful of glue that we were able to put in a hot oven. So what we did first was we looked online at last year models and we decided to create a like half-circle suspension bridge. So because the weight was like, the weight would be supported in the center of the bridge, so we had suspension cables, which were spaghetti noodles, all pointing towards the center. And with the parameters we were given was the bridge had to be no more than 0.6 meters tall and it had to be more than one meter wide. So we made our bridge 0.52 meters tall and approximately 1.1 meters long. And with that, I, we designed the bridge, each suspension cable was every five-degree interval from the center, so it went the whole way around. And we used the lasagna given to us to create the deck of the bridge, because it's a little more sturdy, and then we weaved spaghetti noodles in between them for extra support. Our final design weighed 675 grams and supported 4.8 pounds, which is about 300% more than what the bridge weighed.
So really quickly, I'd like to touch on that number, 300%. That is incredible for the time we were able to put into this. This was a completely after-school activity. Thank you, Mrs. Pompeia, for a few late nights with us getting this together.
And more food.
There were a lot of schools, Greensburg Salem, for example, that use their honors mark physics class to persuade kids with, you get an A if you do it right, to build some pretty incredible bridges. But what we were able to accomplish in our own time, congrats to you guys and couldn't wish for better partners.
I'm just going to talk about some lessons that we learned. Well, one is obviously teamwork. When building the bridge, you had to like, so it's hard to like construct a bridge just by yourself, so you have to have two people on both sides, holding the left and right side, so the people in the middle could like glue the top pieces, the middle pieces, or like you would just like fall over the ground. Then another lesson that we learned is like, it's not really a lesson, but commitment. Like we all stayed after. Me and Tyler went during our study halls. We stayed after a bunch of times. We were debating whether to go on Saturday at one point, but we had the time to finish everything. So overall, I think, I think we did a great job, even though our bridge wasn't the best. But I think we did good as a team and looking forward to do it next year.
So some other lessons that we learned with a special regard to engineering. So one thing we really learned was that spaghetti is really, really brittle. It breaks easily. We have probably half-pound spaghetti that we may or may not have wasted in the trash. Another thing that we learned is that hot glue, while it does work well with spaghetti, doesn't necessarily, isn't necessarily the best tool. And so there were a lot of times where we used a lot more glue than we needed to glue a joint that wasn't necessarily needed. And so a third lesson we learned was patience. So during the competition, we had to place weights into a bucket that was connected to the center of the bridge. And so each weight was anywhere between four ounces to three pounds, and so we could choose the order that we put the weights in. And we really had to plan that out so that we could have the maximum amount of weight before the bridge inevitably crumpled. And so I think patience won in both building the bridge. It took a long time to construct all the strands connecting to the middle. It took a long time to build the arch, and it took a long time to build the deck. And another lesson in patience was to, when we were actually competing, to take a breath and sort of slow down to put the weights in and balance it correctly so that the bridge didn't fall over. There were some teams at the competition who unfortunately had the bridge tip over instead of crumple at the middle because the way unbalanced was, wasn't as well as they had hoped. So I think we learned a lot of necessary engineering principles, but also, again, as Christopher said, a lot of life principles and teamwork and commitment. So I think this was a really good project for us to all take part in. And even though there weren't really any prizes, I think we all came out with a lot of things that we learned from this experience. Thank you.
If you guys have any questions about the competition or any of the results, would be happy to answer those now.
Did you actually build the bridge before you went to the competition?
Yes, so the bridge was built in the math lab here at the school over the course of a little over a week after school and in study halls during lunches. And then that was transported in Mrs. Pompeia's car to St. Vincent for the competition. Yes.
And the pasta that you used, does every team get exactly the same pasta and no? I can't imagine. You said you were weaving spaghetti noodles?
Yeah, so Carbone supplies the pasta. You get a one-pound box of lasagna noodles, which is approximately 10, and then a one-pound box of, or I'm sorry, a half-pound box of lasagna to a two-pound box of spaghetti. And the lasagna essentially was only for the deck. That was the only purpose that made sense. And then the spaghetti weaving was more that instead of trying to run one thin string of spaghetti, we had to layer it properly. So it wasn't in a sense weaving as more as it was layering in order to achieve the maximum strength that we could.
So how come you didn't think about the lasagna being a girder on the end?
The only reason that we weren't using lasagna as a girder on the end was the way that the platform that we were putting it on was set up. It wasn't two full tables. It was almost like crutches that were standing on the ground. It was a very thin platform, so the girder wouldn't provide a lot of support. And at that point, we realized that the best structural shape for the bridge was an arch with trussing all throughout it. Yes?
Were you able to cook the spaghetti at all to get any flexibility?
No, unfortunately. So it was, building the arch was very tedious. You'd be extremely careful. We did have a couple cracks in the process and had to restart a few times, but you'd be surprised how tensile spaghetti is if it needs to be. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Pompeia, for all your hard work.
We're now going to move to our teacher leaders presenting proposed courses for the upcoming 2017 and 18 school year. And we're going to begin with Mr. A.J. Abercorn, who is our teacher leader in our science department.
Thank you. Thanks for the opportunity to speak with you this evening about our elective at the junior high school, our medical detectives. I will have to say Hannah's walking out the door. When Hannah was in eighth grade, we were modeling magnetic fields with magnets and iron shavings, and there was a large spill. And I saw Hannah wrap a paper towel around the magnet. They'd pick up all the iron shavings and then brush them back off into the container. And I almost picked her up and like ran around the room with her. So I'd like you to. So I'd like you to do like Jane Goodall, watching MZs using tools, teaching seventh and eighth grade for a lot of years, it was great. So I'm very proud, very proud of all those guys, the Ls. It's nice to see what happens, so. Medical detectives, do I have control or?
Yes, you do.
All right, so Medical Detectives is a Project Lead the Way course. This is, we'd like to have a, this is the third edition Project Lead the Way course at the junior high school. Currently, we have design and modeling and automation and robotics. So the way it fits in, this is a middle school gateway course that then will lead on to biomedical, computer science and engineering specific courses, some of which we already offer at the high school level. So in addition to students becoming biomedical professionals within the course, a lot of open-ended problem solving, teamwork, communication, and critical thinking skills. So Medical Detectives is split into three main lessons, and I'm incredibly excited. If, those of you that know me, this is right, absolutely right up my alley, and I'm lucky because I actually get to teach this course as well. So out of the three main lessons of what is a medical detective, mysteries of the body and a murder mystery, this is a nine-week course that will fit into a semester schedule based on the A-B day. The first lesson gets into the human body, vitals, vaccinations, vaccinations on public health, a little bit of epidemiology background. Lesson two focuses on human anatomy, the human nervous system, and some genetics, DNA, DNA mutations. Students will be able to isolate DNA from cheek cells, we'll spool that DNA, break the cheek cells open, spool that DNA, and talk about DNA sequencing, genetic testing, and basic Mendelian genetics and passing on traits and look at probability as well. In addition, there's gonna be some dissections, and we're gonna look at a human brain and dissect a sheep brain. So we'll draw the correlation between the human and sheep brain as well as we look at the human nervous system. The final lesson is a murder mystery. So this is a lot of things that you would see on the very popular CSI shows that have come through over the past few years. Time of death by body temperature, that's done with the liver, taking a look at what happens through the autopsy process, analyzing portions of that report to determine cause of death. Picking up from our second lesson, actually taking DNA and spreading it using gel electrophoresis, this is what's used in criminal cases. So students will actually get the practice of pouring gel plates, loading the gel, and actually plugging in the electricity, advancing those DNA samples across the gel, and comparing that evidence, other physical evidence to hopefully the DNA to solve a crime. So again, I'm incredibly excited about this. Everybody I've talked to can hear about, can hear about it, they're very, very excited. Everybody's welcome to stop in anytime. I'll make sure to order some extra sheep brains. So again, stop by. Anybody have any questions? Mr. Palmer?
You said before, I want you to say again, what grade?
Eighth grade.
Eighth grade.
Eighth grade.
Where, where's all the equipment for this? How do you get all that together?
Equipment will come in through our grant funding ordering as we've done in the past with our Project Lead the Way courses that we've added in.
For, for this particular one, does this equipment come in sort of a kit, or do you make all the choices of the components?
The, the, as, as part of the lab, some of these labs will be packaged through, as Project Lead the Way, and I, we will be guided in the proper equipment to buy. We will have to buy gel electrophoresis kits that they could basically run four to six gels, centrifuges, things like that. So we will be guided in the proper equipment purchase to buy to match the parameters of the course.
A.J. will be attending a week-long training this summer, as all Project Lead the Way courses require, and a lot of that information obviously shares with that training as well.
I, I'd just like to say that I can see the great value of this. One of my dear friends is a laboratory scientist at the VA Hospital in Palo Alto, and she used to work at Stanford. And there are machines now that are supposed to do everything, and so you get people which with bachelor's degrees who know how to use the machine. And then when the machine doesn't work, they're done. And the doctor needs the results of the test that he sent in to get from the machine before he decides what to do with the patient, he or she decides what to do with the patient. And about 60 to 70% of those decisions come from the results of the tests. So the things that these students are learning here can really have a lot to do with the career paths that they choose and the knowledge they take into those career paths. And I just think this is a wonderful idea.
I, I agree. The, just the fundamentals and the basics of just even basic laboratory procedure that, you know, everything is based on that. So it's, it's been an awesome experience. It's gonna be great for us to look forward to.
I think that's amazing, I think it's what Mike used to say, they're eighth graders. Eighth graders, I'm gonna start.
Correct.
Thirteen.
Thirteen and more.
A.J., when Mrs. Logan was in college, it was a big deal because Harvard sent a professor, they had a visiting professor from Harvard to her college, and he brought his stem cell piece with him, carried it on the airport. Anyway, it was a huge deal, the thought of eighth graders doing the same kind of, you know, that was, that was a big deal, that, that she got to look at these stem cells. Our kids are gonna be doing that in eighth grade?
Absolutely.
This is, and it, and it's only seven years later, she graduated in 2010, so it's, it's like, it's like the 3D model. You know, that was big when our kids were in college and now we have it in high school. When she studied in college, we've gotten the, in junior high.
Correct. Just the, the use of the gel electrophoresis in the lab. When I started my career, I mean, that was, you know, you did that in the college lab and then eventually made it through. What's great about this, you know, our students in eighth grade will have the opportunity to understand the DNA and, and how gel electrophoresis works. They do, like at the crime lab in Greensburg, that is a machine, it is very, very precise, especially since it's legal cases, but to know the fundamentals. And right now, our AP biology students do gel electrophoresis. So the opportunity for eighth grade, great. Any other questions? So again, come on down, you're invited to stop by anytime. Next up, Mrs. Libby Mack from the art department, thank you.
As A.J. said, my name's Libby Mack, and I'm the teacher leader for the fine arts department, the visual arts department here at the high school. The course that we're proposing is called Advanced Ceramics. Currently, we have two semester courses, Ceramics 1 and Ceramics 2, and we're opening Ceramics 1 to ninth graders next year. And we were thinking that if students would end up finishing, if they took both Ceramics 1 and Ceramics 2, they could finish it by the end of the sophomore year and wouldn't have any ceramics to take their junior or senior year. So we wanted to open a more advanced course to the juniors and seniors that here at Crater Luttrell. We get a lot of requests to take Ceramics 2 a second time, which is a kind of a difficult thing, there's a lot of competition, a lot of requests for these courses, and so we really would like to open up another course for our juniors and seniors. So basically, it would be hand building techniques for Ceramics 1, and it can be taught at the junior high, Lindsay Kitchell will be teaching some sections of Ceramics 1 in the junior high. Wheel throwing will be introduced in Ceramics 2 along with some hand building, and then advanced ceramics would be advanced wheel throwing techniques, advanced hand building techniques, and then decorating techniques, firing, things with a kiln, et cetera. Do you have any questions?
I have no skills with that, so. Eighty-nine, ten, I'm a sophomore, I'm a sophomore, we have no problem.
Thank you very much. The next presenter is Tim Evans for PhysEd.
Hello. Five years ago, I stood up here and we launched a big overhaul in health and PhysEd. We launched what was called a Fight to be Fit. And five years ago, our five-year plan was to increase activity levels K to 12 in the district. We got a, a big grant where we flooded our schools with a lot of fitness equipment at every level, K to 12. We launched morning fit clubs in all of the schools, which are still getting strong now, and we got kids active, we got kids moving, we've seen great improvements in activity levels throughout the district. That five years is up, and it's time to enhance what we're doing. One way to enhance that is by giving kids more avenues to go ahead and find different ways to be active. So what we wanted to do is offer them things that are current and things that are trending right now in fitness. And any of you that are into health and fitness, you would see that there's a big trend towards group fitness. People wanna work out in small groups, people wanna be involved in that capacity. It's also a cheaper alternative to going and getting your own personal trainer, one-on-one training. So group fitness was an easy choice for us to add into the senior high environment. We offer the personal fitness right now, and that concentrates on all fitness components, but it's an individualized class where kids learn about things and they use the things that they learned to develop their own plan. But we wanted to give them an opportunity for the kids who don't want that individuality, who wanna work out in a group and have a social aspect with their peers. So the group fitness class will provide them an opportunity to learn about metabolic training, learn about functional fitness, different types of yoga, kickboxing, things that are fun, that are energetic, that are gonna benefit them throughout a lifetime. So our personal fitness teacher at the senior high showed interest in that, so we wanted to add that class. The other class that we wanted to add in is fitness management, and this is because fitness management is one of the fastest growing careers that are out there. We want kids to have an opportunity to come in and learn about fitness management, what it involves, get their feet wet doing it, shadow at gyms and, and see the process and make a decision on whether this something, is something they wanna be involved in as they move out of high school and into college. The fitness management course, it's designed so that any student who took group fitness and personal fitness as a prerequisite, learned all the basics and the fundamentals, they can come into this fitness management class and not only study and get certified through the National Academy of Sports Medicine, which is the premier certification agency in the country, any gym that hires trainers will hire a trainer that has an NASM or a CSCS. So we're providing our students that opportunity to gain that certification. They did make an exception with us, we negotiated with them, you usually have to be 18, but with a letter of acceptance and recommendation from a principal, our students who complete this college-level course will get that certification as they graduate. They'll be able to go out and work in any gym or fitness center immediately with that certification. With those classes, they're gonna be teaching their peers, so it's gonna give them a lot of experience with people that they're already comfortable with. So they're gonna take the knowledge that they've learned about training, about nutrition, about form, about technique, about adaptation for different types of people, some that are smaller, some that are bigger, some that are athletes, some that are not, and being able to do that in a exercise facility whenever they leave. So we're really giving them an opportunity to really gain a lot, instead of just going and working out, they're seeing the other side, what goes into building a workout, how you take people through a workout, and how you make things successful for everyone. So we're really excited about adding both of these classes. I think it'll be a great enhancement to the curriculum. Anybody have any questions for me? Yes?
How are they paying for the certifications? Is that?
The students pay for the certifications, so there's, it's, it's not required, students have the option to gain that certification. It's $699 for you or I to go out and get that certification. For students, we negotiated the rate down to $329, so it's significantly cheaper than any certification out there, and they're doing it because it's student-based. Thank you. Next up is Cindy Palmelli for Math.
Hello again. I'm here to present two different courses that the math department is requesting adoption for. The one is actually a modification of our current course, which is Algebra 2, our, our regular Algebra 2 course. And I wanna preface it with a statement that the students who are participating in the Moody Mega Math Competition, I think three different times during the day when I was receiving text messages from them, they said to me, "We love this problem." I mean, they just, they could, and cynical as teenagers can be, they could not contain their excitement about the, tackling something that they felt was relevant and that they found interesting. So keep that in mind as I talk to you about what we wanna do with our Algebra 2 class. Normally, in Algebra 2, we're trying to get students excited about quadratic formulas, factoring, trinomials, synthetic division, which one can be hard concepts for these students, but then also they, they're not really seeing, seeing the relevance for their future careers or their, or their current life. So what we, and we also wanted to better prepare the students. So after several discussions among all the math teachers and particularly those who teach this course, they are requesting that we modify the course, that we still cover the basic Algebra 2 concepts and, and make sure that we give the students that foundation. But we're also going to apply that knowledge through concepts and, and skills that they will need in their careers, for example, financial literacy, construction, building trades, technology, healthcare, and we've come across several resources that we can use where we can create projects for the students to work on that will simulate what they need to know in these different careers, but will also require them to use their algebra skills to complete the projects. So we are asking for a modification for the current Algebra 2 course, and it will be more accurately called Algebra 2 for Career readiness. Any questions about that course?
Just a quick one.
Yes.
When you talk about the resources that you're gonna pull and draw on for the problematic part of it, what, what kind of resources are they?
Well, obviously, online is a lot. But then also, when we were researching the course, we were hoping that we could find a textbook that would help us. We were not successful in that, in that a lot of the textbooks that we looked at were college-level. Of course, textbooks that were just not reasonable, they were over $200 a book, but we were able to glean from some of those books and project ideas. I attended a workshop last October, NCTM Conference in Philadelphia, where I went to a financial literacy for Algebra 2 classes, and I was able to pick up a lot of resources like that, so through networking and online.
And Mr. Palmer, it's our goal to partner with other businesses in the community, so they can come up with real-life problems, make the kids go and tour that business, and if that business gives those kids a problem, then solve, go back and, go back.
That's what I was trying to get at, I guess, like, like local resource or, like, information that's gonna fit with our, with our group.
And, and I was, and a lot of this networking too, I, I happened to be at a meeting in Leggina recently, where the Fort Leggina Education Director was there, and when she found out I was a math teacher here, she gave me her card and she goes, "We really wanna partner with you and have your kids," excuse me, "have your kids do math projects with us here at the fort." So it, it is a matter of just getting out there and making those connections. Any other questions on that? Our second course that we're presenting for you tonight is a new course, it's an AP course called Computer Science Principles. Okay, this is a course that is being debuted for the first year by College Board, and I've been reading some statistics on it, that in the history of College Board, they have never had a course that has been so overwhelmingly adopted in its first year of operation, they, or, practice there is more than double the number of teachers and students taking the course than they've ever had before. So it's obviously a course that is being embraced nationwide. Why is this course? Why is this course, or first of all, what is the course? It is basically a college-level introductory computer science course that gives students computing skills and an understanding of the real-world impact of computing applications and programming literacy. The course was developed by College Board and is being encouraged here. Why we want to here at La Trobe for three different reasons. One is in terms of career pathways. The Bureau of Labor Statistics estimates that within the next decade, there will be five million new jobs made available that require people to have computing skills. And as we all know, many jobs, current jobs or traditional jobs that we're comfortable with, from blue collar up through professional, all kinds of jobs, are being phased out because of automation. But I like to think of it that that's not a loss of a job, it's an opportunity to retrain people in the areas of computer science, to make the skills more applicable to what the job market is. A second reason for this course is that it's a great opportunity for students to improve not only their basic programming skills, but also their creative problem-solving abilities, math skills, and it also gives them the opportunity to work collaboratively with other students. It's a project-based course. And lastly, College Board has designed this course to be, to get students who normally not consider taking an AP STEM course to sign up for this class. Really, the only requirements for the course are that a student have a solid Algebra I background, that they have an interest in STEM, and that they're willing and have the discipline to do college-level work. So maybe, you know, there's many students out there who just would never be out of track to maybe take AP Calculus, or AP Physics, or AP Chemistry. This course is for them. And the enrollment this first year nationwide has shown that students are stepping up to the plate where it's students who traditionally don't take AP courses are currently taking this one. We also already offer another AP Computer Science class. It's AP Computer Science A. And that is your more traditional computer programming course where the students learn how to program the code using Java. This course is different from that, and it's truly an introductory computer science class. It can be taken before our other computer science course, or it can be taken concurrently or afterwards. And then more specifically, what the students will learn in the course? Creative problem-solving skills, how to apply computational processes to analyze large data sets, general programming algorithms, the global impacts of computing, internet structures, and cybersecurity issues and apps. They will also, students will also have the opportunity to address real-world issues of interest, create programs and technology that are practical, and gain skills that are also relevant to other disciplines and their careers. Any questions? I don't want to take the course.
The next is...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mrs. Elder, this is for Family Consumer Science Department.
Thank you, Cindy. I'm Nancy Gerford, Family Consumer Science Department. And Personal Finance course that we're including in next year's curriculum is not a new course. We've had a finance course, but it's had several different names. So the quick history of it is, we started off with a course called Beyond High School, and it was a nine-week course, and that was probably eight or nine years ago. We rolled that into a semester course, realizing nine weeks wasn't long enough. It's a semester course. We renamed it Consumer Education, focused on basic consumer skills, financial literacy, all of the components of that. And this year, we decided to rename it again, Personal Finance. We have, the course is housed under Family Consumer Science. I have worked with the business department, with Michelle Butler, and also with Ms. Pompeley in the math department. And so we've talked a little bit about the cross-curricular definition of this course. And so it's going to be, can be included in a lot of different areas. The biggest changes are that we're going to offer it only to 11th and 12th grade. We have found that sophomores and even freshmen really are not ready for the concept of investing in their future, you know, getting out of debt. They don't understand all the concepts of credit. So we've offered it to the younger students in the past, but this year, we're going to try 11th and 12th grade. And we're basically using the same curriculum that we have in teaching, but we're hoping to add more simulation activities, perhaps a few more online interactive activities, a few sites we've found. So we're hoping that that will change it a little bit and make it a little bit more current and allow us to meet their needs. So, any questions about Personal Finance? Okay, thank you. And last, we have Mr. Josh Jordan from the music department.
Okay, good evening, everybody. At this department, I'm Josh Jordan, he's a teacher there at K-12. Good to see everybody tonight. Our course we have for you this evening is, it is, it's a new course that is open to our traditional students, 9th through 12th, but also our special education students, 7th through 12th, to create an atmosphere of helping the students that are interested in going into a therapeutic field such as music, art therapy, or related field, to work with our students and to help serve our special education students in a meaningful musical way. So just a little bit of a background about the course that we're looking at. The title of the course is Adaptive Music/Music Therapy. And like I said, it provides an enrollment for both our traditional students that are interested in therapy, but at the same time, as I mentioned before, serve the needs, the musical needs of our students that are in our special education department, 7th through 12th. So I'll read a little bit about the course and what it would be about. So this new and unique course offers students interested in pursuing a career as a music therapist, special educator, or related field to work with our learning support life field students in an explorative environment using a variety of musical forms such as drum circles, boom wipers, and various types of percussive instruments. Students enrolled in this class will learn a variety of techniques and strategies for engaging our special education students in meaningful music-making while focusing on their fine motor skills, speech and language development, as well as recognition of rhythm and tonality. And like I said, when we were talking about this course, we were looking for something where our special education students could enroll in a course that would also provide our traditional student that is interested in that therapeutic future, such as going into a music, art, or related field in college, to actually have that experience to work with those students. So the way it would work is, over the course of a semester, it would be a semester course open to 9th through 12th grade students. Those students would enroll, they would take it every single day for a semester. Our special education students, who would be working in tandem with our junior and senior high and special education faculty, to help us decide on students that would be interested in that course or who would be benefit from that course and would take it in addition to our, like I said, our therapy students. So the way it would work is, every single day, our therapy students would come to class, and then every other day, our special education students would come to class. So the students, therapy students would have the opportunity to reflect and gain instruction. And on the opposite day, they would actually put those skills, concepts, put them forward and work with our special education students. Again, this is uncharted territory for us. The special education department, the music department, last year, we had a day-long workshop with Jim Donovan from St. Francis University. He provided us with a lot of information and background, drum circles, and therapeutic techniques, and calming techniques for students, especially students that are on the octusic spectrum. So like I said, this course, as we move forward with it, year to year, obviously, we're going to continue to refine it as we go. But again, it's uncharted territory for us, but we're very, very, you know, interested and we want to see those students, especially our special education students, feel that they're actually succeeding, having a wonderful music experience, in addition to also being a part of our ensemble. So, any questions? Thank you very much. Like I said, we're going to push forward, we're going to see where we have it, and it's going to keep going. Thank you.
I don't have a question, I just have a call man.
Sure.
I wanted to thank you, I like to re-eeze the I's. I really appreciate what you're putting on the screen.
Absolutely. Like I said, this is the beginning, and hopefully we can move forward year after year. We'll, you know, refine it and go from there. Any other questions? Okay, I believe I did the last faculty presentation, so at this point, um, take a seat.
Thank you all much.
Yeah, sure.
Thank you. Thank all the beautiful candidates, very nice job. I will move for adoption, resolution number 184, for the 17th year of the school year.
Move in second, if any questions. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously.
And I will move for adoption, resolution number 185, the textbook approval as listed.
If I may add, Mrs. Mains?
Sure.
We do have textbooks that we would like to pass around. These textbooks were presented at the Curriculum Committee. Some of these textbooks are for new courses, others are for existing courses that we do have. I would just like to let the board know, we've really moved to the vision of online resources, online textbooks. So for the textbooks that you see that are being passed around, we purchased a class set of textbooks and then subscription for everybody to access that textbook online. But in addition, it's not just having the textbook online. It's the online resources for the assessments that are involved, the level reading abilities that can be altered in the online version.
Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Elder?
Is that our copyright dated 2018? You haven't seen them yet?
Cindy Pompeley? Yeah, I know that's you. Yeah, they, we just, we had, as of last fall, we were given sample chapters of each of those books because they haven't been published yet. And just this month, we just got these books, and then they said that they will be available for us in June.
Thank you. I'm actually looking for sample copies of the chapters. Good question, I wonder what they're... Any other questions?
Can we just take a peek at the books and come back and vote? Take it out of order, I mean.
Remind you, what I'm going to do on table.
Thank you, thanks for watching.
I'm going to finalize the next two resolutions, number 186 and 187. The first one being to approve a letter of agreement between GLSD and NHS of Pennsylvania. And the second one being to approve affiliation agreement between the University of Pittsburgh and Greensburg Education Department and Great Lakes Private School District.
Let's move in second. Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And this two resolutions pass unanimously.
And the next guy on our agenda is an update on the 2016-2017 school calendar because of the reasons today you want to take that.
With the closure last Tuesday, the snow makeup day will be Tuesday, April 18th, which is the Tuesday immediately following the Easter holiday. Everything else will remain the same.
And Cece, he received a copy of next year's proposed school calendar. So I will move for adoption, resolution number 188, to approve the 2017-2018 school calendar.
Approved in second, any comments?
See, what's the last one, graduation date?
Graduation next year is slated for May 30th.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously.
And the Curriculum Committee meeting minutes from the meeting held on February the 28th are attached for you. And the next Curriculum Committee meeting will be Thursday, May, sorry, Tuesday, May 16th, 2017, 5:30 here in the CSC.
Mrs. Baines, excuse me, since the board meeting was changed on that date until the 20th, to the 23rd, it will be May 20th. Oh, okay, thank you.
We'll come back to 185 for the campus. Okay. I get to, Mrs. Elder?
I'm going to quick together, resolution number 189 and 190, approving of the treasurer's report and approving the payment of the bills and move for their adoption.
Move in second, any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously.
And I'd move for adoption of resolution number 191, to approve gifts, grants, and donations. And we have a new one that's been added. Since the Finance Committee saw the agenda, we've got a grant from the Pennsylvania Department of Education to buy a new combustion oven for LES, which will be for the new LES. And this oven is going to cost a neat number, $15,213.85. So with the pleasure to move for adoption of that grant.
To move in second, any comments?
I can just add, Mrs. Roy applied for that grant, and so she should, you know, we're very grateful that she received, she did a nice job of receiving that. And she just brought that to work today, so we're going to get it on the agenda.
That's wonderful. She's doing a great job, and also about the changes in the requirements for the yield. I've heard her talking about that, so...
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously.
And resolution number 192 is about approving of GASP number 75. And this is a new requirement for our study of post-employment benefits so that the district's financial statements have this on that every year. So I'll move for adoption of that, number 192.
Let's move in second, any questions?
If I could just add, sorry, this replaces GASP 45, so it's, basically what they do is they do an actuarial evaluation of our post-employment benefits for medical deprivation. This doesn't pertain to retirement, so just to make sure, yeah, it's clear about that. But, and it is required that we have it done by third, fourth year, or two years. We've worked with all the groups that have to make, done a very good job.
This is separate from our regular, um, income, et cetera. It's a specialized group that simply does this.
Right.
Which is amazing.
Any other comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously.
And the Finance Committee meetings met on March 8th. Wait, believe it or not, Dan told me what he just said, and I forgot it. Thank you, Dan. And the minutes of that meeting are attached to your agenda. And the next Finance Committee meeting will be Wednesday, April 5th, at 10:00 a.m. at the Admin Building. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Elder. Mr. Palmer, do you need some more time? I could do a student, if you need.
Yep.
The Winter Sports Recognition Program will be Tuesday, April 4th, in the high school auditorium. And the senior nights, we have the track, boys' cross, softball, and girls' cross as listed. And our Athletic Committee meeting from March 8th notes are attached. Community Relations, Dr. George?
There's a committee, La Trobe Parks Recreation Meeting Minutes from February attached. There's an annual report there from La Trobe Parks Recreation, also everyone has. Next meeting is April 20th, La Trobe Municipal Board. That's all.
Thank you, Dr. George. Ms. Marlin, intermediate unit, Mrs. Mains?
Thank you. We move for adoption of resolution number 193, for through the West End Intermediate Unit, General Operating Budget.
Second.
Thank you.
Minutes, second.
I will say, we voted on this last time, but we voted too early, so we have to vote again.
Any other questions?
I haven't seen the budget, so I don't feel comfortable voting.
Little roll call though? Mrs. Elder?
Yes.
Mr. Hauser?
Yes.
Mrs. Mains?
Yes.
Mr. Laser?
Yes.
Mrs. Cozart?
I've seen.
Thank you. Mr. Music?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Dr. George?
Yes.
Dr. Lozen?
Yes. Vote passes on eight, and one to extension. And for those in the audience, she just hasn't had time to look over it, that's what she was saying.
And the next WIU Committee meeting is Tuesday, March the 28th, at 7:30 in the WIU Boardroom. That's all I have. Thank you. This is minutes are attached from the February 28th.
Transportation, Mr. Music?
Thank you. I'm looking for the adoption of resolution 194...
I'm moving through the adoption of Resolution 194, which is to approve individual transportation contract, amen and closing.
Second. It's been moved in seconded, any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously.
I'm concluding now to the EWC TC Joint Operating Committee. The next meeting will be tomorrow, Wednesday, March 22nd, at 7:00 p.m., and that's at the EWC.
Thank you, Mr. Music. Mr. Palmer, do you have any questions on?
I do, but I'll vote. I'm, I'm not comfortable with the political stuff in the Trop Parks, as I was the last time we moved.
You mean the grown male literature?
Yeah. I just, I just don't like the lines of classes. Period. And I think that, you know, we have the Curriculum Committee has to take a harder look at it, we go through it a little tighter. Why are we discussing the Palestinians, Palestinian conflict? And whatever grade he says.
Seventh and eighth grade. Teacher leaders and the elementary teachers did, did together textbook companies, different, various companies came out. This was not the only company that they had. I know Mr. Shibitz was involved with this as well. They thought for the curriculum that they're teaching, the online resources that were available, that I can hold it off.
I'm not trying to, you know.
No, 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 if you're comfortable, then we need to pull that from it.
I, I just.
Just get to vote no.
Yeah, I'll vote no, that's what, that's what I said, I'm good with it.
The curriculum group did need to discuss these, this was already.
We, our, our Curriculum Committee, we have, we have launched several.
Self-remote, any other comments or questions? Yeah, we did have a second. Mr. Hauser?
There was a second.
Okay.
Resolution 185, Mrs. Mayes.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
And why do you vote on that? So seven, two.
You put everyone that voted no, and you show, okay, thank you. Six, three.
Board policy, Mrs. Elder? The only thing to remind you of tonight under the PSBA section of board policy is that we will need to be appointing the voting delegates for the Delegate Assembly in October. And that will, of course, involve anyone who's planning to go to that meeting. So I believe that we have to have those in by June 1st. And so we'll need to discuss that maybe a little bit next month, and certainly vote on it in May. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Elder. Technology, Mr. Palmer?
Thank you, Dr. Walker. We have a technology meeting this evening. And meeting minutes will be available, our next tech meeting, which is May 9th.
Yeah.
May, which one am I working on?
No, it's not on, there's not.
Okay, May 9th.
It's on our agenda, yeah.
So, May 9th, here at the CFC, at 6:00 p.m.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer, for your attendance, recommendation.
I'd ask the board to move on Resolution Number 195, which is the resignations listed.
So moved. It's been moved in seconded, any comments or questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously.
I'd ask the board to move on Resolution Number 196, which is the approval of the professional personnel, the two substitute teachers listed.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded, any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously.
I'd ask the board to move on Resolution Number 197, which is the approval of the support personnel appointment classified.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded, any comments or questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously.
And I'd ask the board to move on Resolution Number 198, which is the approval of the supplemental support personnel.
So moved. It's been moved in seconded, any comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously.
And as was referenced in the meeting earlier, we'd ask the board to look at the meetings in May and change the regular board meeting, which is presently scheduled for Tuesday, May 16th, which is Election Day, to Tuesday, May 23rd, because of Election Day. Because the preliminary budget would be approved on the 23rd, and the fact that it needs to be on review for 30 days, that means that the meetings in June also need to be moved. So the meetings in June are proposed to go to June 20th, the Tuesday, and to June 27th, the Tuesday. So please note those changes, and I'd ask to, the board to move on Resolution Number 199, to approve those changes to our school board meeting dates for May and June.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded, any other questions or comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously.
And just some items of remembering, the Thursday, April 20th Breakfast of Champions here in the center, as well as the senior high school band concert is Wednesday, April 26th, in the R High School Auditorium. If you have not turned in your statement of financial interest, they are due May 1st. Our board meeting dates in April are April 11th, Tuesday, and April 18th, both at 7:30 p.m. And I'd just like to note, many of you were at the musical this past weekend. Just like to thank all of the people who were involved as far as leading that endeavor, as well as all of the students. They did a wonderful job and are wonderful representatives of Greater Latrobe School District. So thank you very much.
We're now moved to hearing a visitor's part two, where anyone from the audience can come to the podium, state your name and address, and you can discuss things that are questions or concerns that are not on today's agenda, and again, limiting each speaker to five. We won't have the time to thank you.
Thank you. Sorry. Kind of awkward for me.
You can stay in your seat if you.
Oh, it's good. It's easier if I put sideways and talk. I am very impressed with the math and the science that I heard earlier. That just really tickled my heart a little bit there, because my son's in fifth grade at Latrobe Elementary, and we're taller, and my son is in advanced math, he's up in sixth grade math and rocking that out. So the science and the math runs in the family, for him to have these come up in the junior high and high school, really exciting for him, for him, the opportunity, so that's really awesome. And also, my, my husband has a degree in forensic science. So the DNA and all that stuff really would excite my husband in that. So maybe we could keep it running in the family or something. I want to thank the members of the Greater Latrobe High School and board for permitting this sign, for the local citizens to speak to you about the concerns that affect us as citizens. My name is Tammy Bailey. I live on 117 Irving Avenue, Latrobe. And this is, I'm here tonight and talks to the proposed DEP hockey relocation on the Irving Avenue Playground. We have been at city council meeting, and we've also been to Parks and Recs meeting, and now we are coming to you, knowing that the property where it's being proposed at is Greater Latrobe School District property, from my understanding, if I'm correct. Myself and the hundred-plus local residents of the area have signed a petition and have very serious safety and traffic concerns. We also have the signed petition with us, if you'd like to see that, if you'd like a copy of that. First, let me state that we are for the DEP hockey program, and we support the Latrobe Parks and Recs Board and its endeavors. There are over 40 activities held near our homes currently, and are adding a permanent, well-attended one, is a concern we should all be wary of. We also have a copy of all the activities that we have come to, printed out to show you all the things that are going on in Legion Keener Park, if you'd like a copy of that also. With the activities come extra auto traffic, an already heavily traveled residential neighborhood, parking issues, loss of heavily used playground and green space, loss of a basketball court, the only basketball court in Legion Keener Park, more garbage to pick up, as well as more pedestrian traffic near our homes. We hope that all the groups involved in this relocation can come to a resolution and a mutual give and take work for the citizens of the children of Latrobe. Our number one goal is for the safety of our children and anyone else entering an already overcrowded area during these activities. On a very frequent basis, the speed limits and traffic signs are not heeded and obeyed. This issue has yet to be addressed and taken care of. There is no handicap parking in this Irving Avenue location, except for one, as paid by a resident who owns that handicap spot. The local residents will need to get parking permits, and we are told that if we had issues with speeding, that we are to call 911 for every incident, so it can be on record. And with the call of that, we don't feel this is an efficient use of the 911 system, that we should be calling for people blowing their stop signs constantly. It's not fair to the police officers that there's only two on duty for each shift at the time. We ask that you may be able to find some influences in relocating to the field that lies behind the stadium, away from residential homes, where we have a chance of our property value dropping, like again, loss of playground space, loss of green space, and put it between Latrobe Little League Field, between the stadium and Latrobe Little League Field. We understand that decision has not been made lightly, but we will still feel the need to raise our concerns and be heard. As speaking on a personal level, I have two boys, I moved here in 2009, when my son was going on one years old and three. And I bought my house on Irving Avenue because of the walk path, the green space, the playground, knowing that my kids were going to grow up there. Even though there is a humongous playground down Big Keener Park, it is something that we would have to travel down there, to be able to go down there. As the years went by, my youngest son has developed medical issues, severe sensory issues, high anxiety issues, and is also being retested to be on autism spectrum. My son uses that playground where he can go out there, my oldest goes out there, and if a leaf touches my son's face, he's able to run back home and come inside. If you ever seen Finding Nimbo, where you go out in the water, you come back into the water, you go out into the water, you come back, that is my son, who plays at that playground. Today, I was very lucky, my son played out there for four hours today, at that playground, swinging on the swings, making social interactions with those other kids. We are told that the playground will be torn down to put the DEP hockey there. The proposed is that in order to have a second playground rebuilt there, from Parks and Recs, if I'm correct, Mrs. Mayes, that you would have to put in a grant for that, which would be next spring. If the grant was accepted, which would be fall, we would also have to have money to match that grant. So fifty thousand dollars you put in for a grant, we would have to come up, Parks and Recs or whomever, would have to come up with the other fifty thousand to match that park. We are looking at probably two years before they can even put another playground there. We lose the only basketball court that is heavily used by kids. On our first nice day this year, the first day that we had, that 60-degree weather, we had 50 people at that playground. Games go on, field, kickball, kids at that playground. We have 27 kids within an L-shaped block that are growing up, that their parents also purchased their homes there recently because of the playground right there, because it's easy accessible there. I do love Big Keener Park, but that playground is too much for my little boy to be able to go there because of his sensory issues, it's too much for him, it's too crowded, he can't handle it, and the amount of kids there gets too overwhelming for him. This playground gives him the things that he needs to be able to go out and socialize. There's a lot of people that use that playground. When they're walking, they stop there, we have kids using it when you have the Steeler Fest going on, anything, the Fourth of July Festival, they're all at that playground, cheerleading, they're all at that playground, the kids are there, that playground, that field is used heavily. Today, we had track and field there today. And if you would have looked where the lines were, where this, this was lined in shot wood and, and jowl and throw, there's not a lot of green space left. You take away that playground, we got a little tiny piece of grass now. So where are the neighborhood kids going? Our kids have somewhere where all of our residents sit on our porch and we watch our kids play in that field. They are out there all the time, and it's a wonderful benefit to have there, to have these kids be able to have access to that park for the neighborhood. We talked about, you know, watching for drugs.
Man, I'm so sorry to interrupt you. We, we do a five-minute.
Am I past my five minutes?
About seven.
Now, I really didn't realize how much I had.
Give you a little time.
I'm sorry. I, I apologize.
I'm sorry, I thought you were.
I didn't feel like it was that long. Everything else is like two hours ago, I apologize.
Take, take a few seconds.
Okay. I would really like for Latrobe School District to really think about the placement of this DEP hockey being there, and what it's taking away from the kids. You're also taking away at least one more year for the kids at the elementary to be able to play outside with no playground equipment. But this part is very important. It's free, it's not a paid program. Seems like a lot of things are paid these days, and a lot of parents can't afford them anymore. So this is free, and this is beneficial to the children of that neighborhood, of that neighborhood that we moved there for. So I'd like you to really consider the residents' thoughts on this. And I thank you for your time, and I thank you for allowing this to be an open meeting. It was very eyeful opening here to hear what great things Latrobe School District is doing for our youth, it is really wonderful, thank you.
Thank you for bringing your answer.
I'll just speak up. We are, we have raised your concerns several times, and we at Parks and Rec are in the process of trying to do everything we can to address your concerns. We're hoping to have a decision made by April the 20th at our next meeting. But there will be meetings in between, like with the, with the, probably with the mayor and the police department, different things that we are in the process of talking about. We understand your concerns, believe me, we're not against you. DEP hockey is a major part of our budget, and, and we just can't forego DEP hockey. But we, we do have your concerns in mind, and we are trying to address them.
Greatly appreciate that you say that. It is a big concern to the residents, because it's almost like, it feels like DEP hockey is before the residents in our homes.
No, that was never the case, never.
And the safety, the safety, you know, with last meeting, city council, safety, the police officer's not been able to, you guys are still trying to figure out that situation, which can't really be discussed until, I'm sure you guys are discussing it, about the controlling of the area there. But things have to be fixed before my son gets settled.
We have heard you, and we are taking all that into consideration.
Thank you, I appreciate that, Miss Mayes.
And I will comment, as I, as I spoke to Mr. Clark on the phone, the school district is, has entered into many years ago, around 1950.
1947.
1947, thank you, a lease with the Latrobe Foundation for that particular piece of property. So even though you mentioned that the district owns that property, and you are correct, it is leased to Latrobe Foundation for recreational purposes. And I just wanted to make sure that everybody was aware of that. Yes, the district owns it, but it is in a 99-year lease with Latrobe Foundation, which obviously was part of our.
It's very confusing to try to figure out who's Latrobe Foundation, who's Greater Latrobe, it's like one side.
Try. Your comment, and, and I just wanted to note that, because I think you said at the beginning of your comment, that the district does own that property, and you're absolutely correct. But I just wanted to note, as I had said previous, that it is under lease to the Latrobe Foundation for recreational purposes, so.
And that, that was actually a lease entered into by our predecessor school district before this school district was even formed, it was the school district of Latrobe Borough. And of course, all the ownership of land and contracts and things like that, when the, when the jointure of the school district happened with, with the different communities, we accepted the ownership of all the properties, but we also accepted, you know, certain liabilities and restrictions. And this old lease for a hundred years, a 99-year, a 99-year.
And this old lease for a hundred years, or ninety-nine years, was one of them. It's even before the people, these people and people going before them really had nothing to do for a second.
And it doesn't overshadow your concern?
No.
I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you. Can I ask one question in regards to the Latrobe Elementary? That's standing right now, is, from my understanding, when the new Latrobe Elementary is going to be built, which I am for, I think it's a wonderful idea to be with times, is part of the cost that was for the Latrobe Elementary also include, if I am correct, the demolition of the old elementary? I mean, I'm kind of confused on that, because if so, that kind of tells you there's property there, too, to utilize in the school district. Nobody really knows what's with the old L E S, so.
You are correct that there was a feasibility study, and there was a lot of different options placed in that feasibility study, which is, I think, what you're referencing. As the school board, there has been no decision made yet, mainly because the students are going to be in that building for another year and a half. That is something that the board, moving through the next six, nine months, is going to have to make some decisions about, but there has been no decision made about current Latrobe Elementary School because of the timeline that the students are going to be in the building.
But the cost for the new elementary, you're not seeing, that does not include.
But like a demolition, the demolition.
No, but I know what you're referencing.
Yeah.
It was noted in one of the different options initially.
We're trying to weed through and figure out what belongs to what, because there's been so many meetings on it, and it's kind of like.
One of the, one of the issues that is frequently overlooked is the fact that accessibility to utilities and where they're located. And a lot of times, you know, people have said, you know, such as the visitor's side of the football stadium, why don't we do something with that? Well, simply because it's over top of the sewage line. That whole area in there is riddled with parts of it. So it's, they're trying to put it in a place where it doesn't affect, where you're not on top of the gas line, or on top of the water line, or so on and so forth. So those things come into play that people don't realize because they're underground. Nobody realizes what's there, and there's a lot down there. There's a lot there. So a lot of the places that you may think are feasible may not be for a reason you don't know. It may be, it may not be feasible because of an underground utility or their lack of. So those are some of the things that come into play that, when Sue says, we know what you, we have your best interests in mind. We did, but I think that there's other circumstances, and other things that come into play that we are, we know about, that unfortunately they steer part of the decision.
Unfortunately, the city of Latrobe is very, very, very small compared to its outer banks of unity. And there's not a lot of green space left. And the only green space that's left seems to be wanting to be built on by a paid program. And we did mention other areas, even such as Bagley Elementary, because there's a hundred acres of land behind there that would be a Greater Latrobe School District property. And the heads started shaking no, because they wanted to keep it in the city of Latrobe. But we don't have a lot of room in the city of Latrobe anymore without affecting residents and affecting children, children who can't afford the paid program. So this came to a very big concern of mine, especially for my son, who utilizes that playground, both of my boys and the neighborhood kids that utilize that great playground on a daily basis. And I know that anybody who drives through there in the summertime will see that there's always kids in that field playing kickball and everything, and at that playground. Those are our neighborhood kids that walk there. And basketball courts, it's the only basketball court in walking distance that people go there instead of going over by Hoover Hall, where there's three or four courts. That's the only other basketball courts that are around. So there's a lot of concerns there, taking away great programs, because of a lot of kids that do basketball through the school district, and they go there to practice their basketball. So I appreciate your time on everything. I won't keep you, since it is getting late. I appreciate you listening to us.
Anybody else? Move the adoption of Resolution Two Hundred to adjourn? If you're in favor, please say aye.
Aye.